First item on the agenda is citizens' input. If there's anyone that needs to address their council, please come forward and state your name and we'd be happy to hear you. Anyone? All right, I want to thank y'all for coming tonight. Items for consideration, we'll start with Loudoun County Solid Waste Disposal Commission. Steve Fields.
Tony, you okay?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I appreciate the opportunity to come visit with you. One of the things that, well, let me first introduce myself, because mostly for the public that may not know me, but hopefully all the members do. My name's Steve Field, I'm the chairman of the Solid Waste Disposal Commission. And the issue that we have, or the item that we wanted to bring to your attention, was the modification of our current contract with Santech with Services, who's been managing the landfill for quite a number of years. Because Todd did such a great job of summarizing the points of our contract negotiations, I don't necessarily want to run through them in detail. But a couple of things that I would mention, in terms of the time extension through December 31st of 2038, the way the contract, at least the way we think we're headed, is going to be based more on how long it takes to fill this 53 acres. And in terms of our current waste volumes, it's projected that that 53 acres would be full in 2035 or 2036. So again, if the waste volumes go down, there's a possibility it would go to that 2038 date. But in our current waste volumes, it would, the term would end in 2035 or 36. And if the waste volumes go up, it's going to be a shorter duration. And I know Santech has sales representatives who are running all over Loudoun County, trying their best to increase the volume and do what they can to, again, increase that day of volume. The other thing that I think is really important, particularly for the folks that live near the landfill, is the pile elevation of the landfill. And under our current permit, the current permit elevation is 1,108 feet. Current elevation at the landfill is about 1,070 feet. So if we were to build the landfill out to its current permitted elevation, there's a 30-foot difference. Santech, when they proposed their major modification of landfill, proposed to build it to a height of 1,125 feet, which is about 55 feet taller than it is now. And one of the things that the board has been very concerned about is having a feature in Loudoun County, this part of the county, that's really visible. And essentially through negotiations with Santech, we have talked about capping the maximum elevation at 1,098 feet, which is a little bit taller than what it is today. Many people ask, why has Santech wanted to extend the contract for so long? Part of what's driving their decision is the loss of the airspace between what they would like to build out and what we would be allowing them to build out. And the difference between the permitted airspace, potential permitted airspace, and what we want to hold as the maximum elevation, is almost 900,000 cubic yards of garbage. And for Santech, they consider that a lost opportunity in terms of revenue. So that's one of the reasons that's driving them to extend the contract for a further period of time, is to try to have an opportunity to make up as much money as they could from losing that 900,000 cubic feet airspace. The other thing that they're doing is posting a bond for financial assurance. And that's one of the things that Larry Jamison, in particular, one of our board members, is really interested in making sure that the county and the stakeholders are relieved of that liability for closing the landfill. And Santech would, as part of this negotiation, would put up a performance bond to close the landfill should something happen. The other piece of the puzzle is, in terms of getting a secure financial footing, is that under this agreement, Santech would close all 53 acres of the landfill at their expense. And under the current agreement, the Solid Waste Commission is responsible for closure of the landfill, or those portions of landfill that Santech had to close. But in this agreement, there's a very specific timeframe and acreage numbers where Santech has certain benchmarks in the development of landfill, that they'll go ahead and close parts of it and put them under permanent closure.
That's a big plus. That was a complaint, a lot of times they wouldn't close one out and finish it up and then...
Yeah, so in this particular agreement, we're looking at, I think, probably four phases of closure, but some of the initial phases would take place fairly shortly after the new contract was put in place. Really, I'm here to answer questions or hear your concerns and...
Will the bond be for the life of the contract, new contract?
Yes.
And who is going to be responsible to ensure that that bond is maintained, with a little bit of problems with that in the past?
I would say that would be the responsibility of the Solid Waste Commission, to make sure it's maintained, it's a solid bond, and that it is able to be enforced should something happen.
Councilmember Brewster's right, we've had problems, they'd be good to keep up with that, make sure that the bond's there.
And this would be a bond that would have to also meet TDEC's scrutiny for financial assurance. And recently, TDEC has been strapped with some situations where they have gone to collect on a bond where the landfill wasn't performing and the bond was no good. So clearly, those kind of things need to be considered and looked after closely over the life of the contract.
We also talked about this would affect the audit for the Solid Waste Commission, so it would have to be something that would also be reviewed during that audit time.
That's an independent, that's an independent firm that does that?
Yeah, Richard Hill has been an auditor for quite a number of years.
Good, because it would have like the liability really asked about.
It's good to have somebody else checking it that way. Any questions for Steve?
This bond that you're speaking of, I've known, I know one instance where the bond company had was called on to finish the job. Unfortunately, the insurance company that issued the bond, it went bankrupt. They hadn't been keeping up with it, hadn't washed it, so it called them. It was a situation where, I don't know what's going to happen, because the money's never been collected. I'm assuming that we're going to monitor this bond and the company that's issuing it to make certain that they do stay solid?
Yeah, I would say yes.
Because that would have to be done probably on a yearly basis.
Yes, understand that. And again, I think that these types of concerns are absolutely valid, and to the extent that you can, you encourage us to, you know, make sure we put the right controls in place, I think that's part of the responsibility that you...
Well, you can see the period of time it's lapsing over, it's a long time.
Sure, understand.
Any questions for Steve?
Yeah, one more.
Sure.
I do not want to go through another winter with them trashing our road down there. And I know it's in the contract for them to put in a wheel wash, but it don't define in that contract when they got to have it in and the type of wheel wash it has to be. And I hope this body does not agree to no contract till there's a defined term and date when this wheel wash is going in, because this year, we're going to start issuing citations.
Understand. I mean, this has been an issue for me with Santech for years. And I certainly understand the concern and the aggravation that it causes the community. And part of our challenge as the board is that TDEC, for whatever reason, doesn't cite Santech over those issues. And without being cited by TDEC, the amount of teeth that we have is somewhat lessened. Clearly, this is law enforcement potential issue for the trucks that are tracking mud on the highway. The solution is to put in a proper wheel wash system. Santech has done a lot of work to improve the situation, they have a long way to go. They are proposing, and we have some plans or some cut sheets from some of the vendors that they've been working with. And, you know, I've been encouraging Santech to not only just take the salesman's word for the quality of their equipment, but to talk to the road people in the counties where they had installed these things, and find out what the county road people say about, you know, does this thing work as a delivery as it's supposed to? The particular system that they're proposing to install, it's an automatic system, it has pressure washers that do the whole undercarriage. The cost is probably upwards of a couple hundred thousand dollars. It's also a piece of equipment that takes a lot of maintenance. So for, you know, I'm not only concerned about making sure they get the right piece of equipment, I'm concerned that Santech is doing a good job of maintaining it properly.
And making mandatory that the garbage go through it.
Yeah.
I guess sometimes they opt out and don't go through the pressure wash.
Well, I think part of the problem that we have with that situation here in Loudoun County, is that Loudoun County and Loudoun City is not near as strict as our surrounding counties are. Merville, there's no telling what they've paid in fines last year in Merville. I've worked over there. If they find something in the road that'll track you down and make you go clean it up right then, I mean, you don't leave there, they'll have your truck and pound you if you don't do something. And we've got to reach out ourselves, because, believe me, TDEC's laws are a lot stricter, a lot lenient, and we should be. Because TDEC, you know, if you're not big rocks and roads and things of that nature, they don't usually get involved. If you're making an effort, they won't get involved. I mean, what they say is, put down a bed of a big rock and run over it to get out, and that way you don't carry a rock out. But you still will carry mud out and things like that. But in Merville, Farquhar, that won't work, you know, it does not work. And whether they have a wheel wash, whether they get a shovel and clean it out, or a broom and clean it up, it doesn't matter. It won't be left in the road. And we need to look at that side here in Loudoun. Because you could contact Merville, talk to the people over there, contact Farquhar, talk to the people up there. I mean, it's no different, we may be a smaller, different place, but it's no different doing business here than it is up there. Because they do business up there, they know what the rules are.
Agreed.
Okay. Any more questions for Steve?
Have they set a timeframe when they're going to put that hydraulic wheel wash in?
They're waiting for us to have a, they're getting ready to do a purchase agreement, from what I understand. I haven't seen the details yet, but they're getting ready to act on this, but they're holding up acting until we have this contract modified.
The wording in the contract that is lacking, is they have up to a year just to research to see what type of wheel wash they're going to?
I'm not sure of the exact wording, but, I mean, it's a very sensitive topic to the board, not only for Tammy, but for Kelly and for Larry Jamison in particular.
And the commissioner may have been on it for a while.
We have tried to speed up that process, because initially, they weren't going to look into a wheel wash until the contract was signed. We reminded them that the contract was dependent upon a wheel wash, so it was going to have to be on go soft. So they have started looking into wheel washes, I think they even got some filters planned to go take a look at some of them if they haven't already done that. Some that are already installed in different areas, so that's promising, the work that they are doing.
I hear you talking, it's promising, but that drug their fleet.
Councilmember, the mayor's can keep us posted on that, he can keep the wheels still fired.
We asked about it, it never paid, we're aware.
Yeah, but Santech, Santech has a, in terms of some of the improvements that they've done, there is a wheel wash station where you drive through and you cross a number of rumble strips. Some truck drivers choose to drive around it because it's, you know, it's rubber in the car. Santech tries to enforce that to the extent that they can, and if they catch drivers going out, they threaten to exclude the drivers from coming back to landfill. So they're, I mean, they're not doing nothing. Clearly, they're not doing enough, but they're not, it's not that they're not doing nothing. They have a long way to go to improve. I think we're on, I like to think we're on the right path.
When Farquhar was set up, he was going to have some of his part timers. He was going to start issuing warnings, I don't agree. And then we got the dry season.
That won't, that won't last too long.
Citations, you know, get our attention.
I mean, even the presence would, if they saw you going in, they'd go through it. So that would never hurt.
Okay, any more for Steve? Thank you, Steve, for coming.
Thank you, Ray. Well, one other thing I might ask you to consider is, as we're moving through this process, as a board, one of the stakeholders, what kind of a process would you folks like to go through in terms of approving the contract, or accepting the regulations, the Solid Waste Commission, or what, just, you might just think about what kind of involvement you'd like to do in terms of, once we get that final contract language in place, have an opportunity for everybody to look at it and hopefully be comfortable with it, and certainly raise, you know, any issues or questions that you have, you know, as a board, as a government entity, what, you know, how might you want to acknowledge that agreement?
If you could get the final contract to us in time for us to redo it before, I mean, not the date of the vote or, you know, we all vote, like, if it gives time to review it, that'd be nice.
Yeah, there'll be plenty of opportunity for all the stakeholders to review the final language and make sure folks are comfortable with it.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Appalachian Regional Commission grant. Mayor Ross?
Yes, City of Loudoun's approved for a grant of $50,000 from the Appalachian Regional Commission to conduct a feasibility study for the dredging of the confluence of Steekey Creek and the Tennessee River. What's commonly known in Loudoun is Pearl Harbor. And the ultimate goal is to determine the cost of engineering and ultimately construction that would be involved in converting Pearl Harbor to a true, you know, Loudoun harbor that we can be proud of, full commerce off of the river, including Volunteer Day on Saturdays. Speaking of volunteers, the University of Tennessee School of Engineering students, seniors took this on as a senior project and calculated some dredge figures for us, of course, they're not licensed engineers. And now, we want to take the next step, we'd like to get licensed engineers involved to give us a true picture and an estimate of what all this would entail. That's why I would like to introduce Jamie Blanton of Thompson Engineering. He's going to tell you a little bit about himself and what he foresees in this project.
Yeah, Jamie Blanton, Thompson Engineering, I'm out of Chattanooga, Thompson's based out of Mobile, got 14 regional offices around the southeast. I assume that I would be assisting or supplanting information in what you're trying to write, that's not seemingly the case. And y'all led off with the landfill discussion, talking about not tracking mud on the roads, and we're talking about trying to haul a number of thousand yards of buck out of the middle downtown. So that's a brand-new opportunity, we'll be very specific about how the TDEC disturbance permits are written. But nonetheless, we got involved with this project, our wind of a need of a project, by doing a similar effort for Ray County. They have, as you know, the Fish State has generated a great deal of commerce and garnered some state attention for the amount of traffic that's brought into the county. And so they want to improve their harbor in a very specific way to accommodate that type of traffic. Since then, nearly anybody was on big enough to fit college fishing tournament into us, looking at the same type of activity. You guys have a number of other revenue streams and potential commerce, both with just the traditional traffic, the game bay involvement, the where you live, just in the, in the overall traffic what bar, if you had other amenities that voters could get to, and then just the immediate impacts that you make to your surrounding waterfront downtown area. As Todd discussed, students at UT did a fairly thorough, basic civil survey, slight MEP and GO assessment of the harbor, hit most of the high points that another consultant might want to consider for all the issues that you may face in accessing the harbor, depending on how you want to do that. And so we did include some language in our proposal that does accommodate at least a little bit of planning, and I want to hit this at like a 5,000-foot area. But essentially, you have, you have a substantial grant. Dredging alone is not insanely intensive civil engineering fee. Permitting coordination and other agency coordination has some fee associated with it, but even that's, can be somewhat limited. You'll have a co-applicant with Army Corps and TBA to accomplish it. And this particular easement that you guys own through TBA is already fairly well depicted with sections that we haven't yet verified, but provided the elevation information is correct, you're essentially already permitted, where other municipalities don't always have that, or either they have very old records where it's not correct. So if you're actually trying to achieve a specific access to the harbor, if that's, doesn't agree with what TBA thinks, then you have to go through the entire process. Again, it's a little more cumbersome. But essentially, that's what we hope to do, is meet the goal, the UT depiction of a possible grading layout within your boundary for the, one of the easements that TBA has with the city. And that includes quite a number of utility and other access modifications, but nothing that we can't certainly work around or find a solution for. You see a fairly extensive amount of courtesy dock improvements. You have a number of those. Are you guys mostly familiar with your standing TBA permit and what you can and can't have there?
I'm not.
TBA, so your permit, the first sheet will essentially have a laundry list of all, if it is a gas station, or a Crispy, or a splash pad, or whatever it is, they'll list the number of those. Coming to the area, you know, five, six years ago, TBA previously asked, don't include anything that you can't pay for within a very short window of time. There's been some new rec lands, people come on board with some new philosophies about how, how, you know, charrettes with the public and long-range land plans and zoning issues happen in their long-range plans, and therefore, it's really only prudent for you to put much longer-range plans in a recreational easement, even if it's maybe a 25-year effort. If it's a hotel one day, that, you know, bounds the entire thing, and you have a Louis Vuitton downstairs, go ahead and list it now, and let's try and include that in permanent. Which is, of course, an exaggeration, because we don't have Louis Vuitton anymore. Yeah, so it's fairly evident what issues a boat may encounter in accessing your very valuable shoreline there. And so we have some grading and environmental effort to do to achieve that. Among the issues are obviously the sediment loads leading to the harbor from Steekey Creek. And so I included just a picture of the property viewers, it's a very mild due diligence that we've developed the project. You own a number of parcels along Steekey Creek leading to it, so there may be some sediment or operation basins that we could consider with TDEC's participation, as long as they don't classify it as a stream mitigation. We would, may help us keep the sediment out of the creek in its current boundaries in the future. And of course, as the creek is maintained and stays as beautiful as it is, and if there's large agricultural properties that one day the city finds to its benefit to want to develop and move forward, this is obviously your zoning map, but if you have a land use planning map of what you might see downtown developing into in about 10, 60 years from now, then we would certainly want to include that, much like I said before, just in this preliminary application process with the, with our regulatory authorities. I don't know if anybody wants to read that, that's scope language from the contract.
Proposed timeline, we know this is flexible, but take us through what all the project could entail.
Yeah, so essentially, the timeline is what would be, I think, recognized as what would be a published amount of review time, with two obvious chasms there. One of those being essentially completely involved with environmental permitting, cultural, historic, archaeological, architectural resources, ecological resources, large period of time. And then, being that I included some construction, rough scheduling and forecasting, the seasonal pool variance, and the management by TBA is also a large, a large time impacting item. So many of the items, you have, for instance, survey and, survey and sections take, can take on expedited timeline as little as, you know, a few weeks, but going through power generation, storage, and flood storage, and navigation review, and the rest, the same section may be analyzed a thousand different ways, and you guys, I'm certain are all intimately familiar with how regulators would like to take to review things. But predominantly on this schedule, if the takeaway is preliminary engineering, long environmental surveys, final engineering, construction administration, bid preparation, there's federal money involved, there's a lot of federal oversight, but all the binding, ARC, we spoke to Bill, the ARC, he doesn't have this on his desk yet, but ARC actually maintains their own environmental review as an executive of federal money. So there's the federal review, there's the ARC, the technical review, in addition to the TBA, TDEC, everybody gets their hands on it. And in fact, in southeast Tennessee Economic Development District, they have an environmental review as well. So the exact same document gets reviewed any number of 12 ways, and we generally respond to comments, but fortunately, we haven't found that we actually make too many revisions to what the city and the consultant's goals are. So that's imperative. And that was super fast, I apologize and leave a lot of room for questions along in there, but if you guys have any, happy to...
When you complete this contract, we would, we would be in a position to really talk to you about that.
To begin, the construction dredging?
Yeah.
Yes, or that's, that's the primary?
Or permits would be acquired.
That's the primary, yeah.
Right, okay.
One hundred percent complete?
Yes, sir.
Plan and everything.
And Todd, was this a matching grant, or was this...
It's 50% match.
Okay. So we budgeted for that, our 50%?
Well, we would, we didn't budget it for any grants this year. This is new to you, and we're, we're interested in seeing this new, and I'd say what the new council would like to do with this particular project, but it would, it would come in the form of a budget amendment, a matching grant.
Okay.
And maybe to expand on the question, the construction documents and the effort that we hope to meet by priority one, we would like to cast, I think, as broad a net as possible, to make sure that we occupy as much of the grant money as is available to us, provided that the planning directions are constrained enough that both y'all are agreeable to where we think the biggest thing for the boat might be, and that it's, and that it's desirable to pursue from a secondary construction standpoint. We wouldn't want to, even though it's good to dream big for the permit, it's also good to sequence the work such that it's digestible as you guys go along, and what you think, if you can generate revenue from a certain amount of work, it might then feed other projects, and that's the type of planning that we'd like to be involved in.
The Ray County project, do they have a winter pool too?
They did.
Usable?
That was, that was the goal of their project, was to get full-foot winter water in their existing harbor.
That's what we're looking for, too.
Right. Yeah, their docks were, well, until an unnamed sailboat showed up, they just let them dry off in the wintertime, they actually had to drag them out into the channel during the wintertime previously. So we, the goal was for full-foot winter water. But it did, the other, the other goal was accessibility, so we used a vegetated anchor fabric as opposed to riprap along the new embankment that we placed, and there's actually, I probably shouldn't have sent some of those pictures, but there's pictures of the last... have sent some of those pictures, but there's pictures of the last 225 boats turned with the hammer, the boats are just pulled directly up onto it. So it made the staging and sequencing of the boats a lot easier.
Easier, yeah.
We hope, again, as part of the planning, there's a dock that we did not install, that we're going to use that TBA credit for a dock to put actually a weigh-in station out in the channel originally, so that'll also kind of speed a few things along with weigh-in and when they take off in the morning times.
Well, it's exciting, I think. I think it's a big game changer for downtown, and so I think it's a good idea. It's way out there.
Let's go back, contact the county to make sure.
That would be a good start.
I can conclude that as a scope item.
You said dream big, put it in your plan, that's right.
Dream big, that's right.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Blatman, people have any other questions? So Todd, I think consensus move forward.
Absolutely. Yeah, put together a contract, your consideration, and then that can trickle over to a budget area.
Okay. Thank you.
Stand by, do your work.
Absolutely. We'll get to...
Thank you, Jamie. Next item on the agenda is the investment policy. Will you give copies of that? Manager Ross, I'll let you...
Yes, Nicole Curtis and the finance staff have put together what I think is a very sound investment policy. A driver of this has come from the utility board. The director is on that board, desires some movement and flexibility of funds to secure higher interest rates. This is the top policy that we facilitated, but also strike the right balance and protect the taxpayers and ratepayers of our community against future losses.
I'm sure everyone read through it, seemed very detailed.
This came from utility board, too, correct?
Correct.
What was their stance on it?
That was all on board. It's good, I mean, I think Nicole shared that the past 30 years has just been the same place.
This actually came out of our budget discussions when we look at interest earnings in the city and the utilities. All of our funds are currently held by one institution, and if you look at the trends in interest earnings that are available in the market, over the last year, those have crept up beyond what we're currently earning, but we can't really take advantage of that because it involves going out and establishing accounts with other financial institutions. This policy directs that the city manager, city reporter, director of finance become investment officers and authorized to establish those accounts and move money to where it can earn the highest levels of interest, and it would make an impact on the budget. So it would make an improvement. You mentioned the utility board. One thing they did request in addition to the policy is a review of the investment activities, perhaps quarterly, has been suggested, so we would do that as well. Again, these opportunities come available in between the times when you need and the utility board needs, so we want a policy with guidelines as to how to make those decisions, and who's authorized to make those decisions, and then we can report back to the council and utility board.
So you can read, like in number seven, like she said, the city reporter, finance director, city manager, they're given the authority to do that. It won't come up to us to vote on it. It depends, just as she said, in a quarterly report, and certainly, if there's something we see, needs to be looked into, they will take that advice, but it wouldn't take a vote on us.
I like to add in the quarterly report, that just keeps us updated on how it's earning and exactly where it's at.
As long as everyone understands they have full responsibility of doing, making those decisions, they don't have to bring those decisions back to us. They just report back.
Again, you lose the opportunity to secure an interest rate if you have to wait on both council and board to vote, so.
It'd be like allowing the city trustee.
I think it's a good policy, what I read, I mean, it's clear and straightforward. Is everybody okay with that? Any questions? Okay. Is that something we need to vote on that, Todd, to implement that policy? Is that something...
This is a policy that you would approve.
Okay. All right. Next is the park paving quotes, and those included in your package yourself, prices, and Manager Ross, I'll put you...
Yes, and I would pass it down. So of course, Director Ellis Scruggs, if you'd love to come to the podium, and you could be prepared to answer any questions as well. What we did is we solicited bids for these four park parking lots, and in the results of our bidding, we have found four examples, and the question becomes, because most of them, all bids came in higher than what we projected in the budget, it's time for you as representatives, elected representatives of the community to kind of pick and choose which park parking lots you want to pay under the current budget, or you would choose to amend the budget. This is a workshop discussion on this topic.
Okay. We tried to procure five of the contractors, unfortunately, four of them decided to did. But again, if you look at this breakdown, we've got it where each, basically each contractor's bid for each parking lot, and then we summed it on the bottom, you know, without the municipal lots, we've actually got leave in the budget and uncovered those three lots. It's when you get into the other two municipal lots is where it goes, exceeds the current budget. As it stands right now, Rogers Group is the low bid for those three, which is the Lions Club, Dog Park, and the Maribor Shelter. But if you include the two municipal parking lots, then string bill becomes a low bid.
Right. One of the things that confused me was the Lions Club Park. It's really the Lions Club Pavilion, I guess, is where it's at.
We looked at Lions Club Park as being across the ground.
Yeah, because there's nothing to pay down there. There's no parking lots paid there, anyway, it's just the Pavilion. Okay, so it's, what was put in the 200,000, was it, that's what was allocated for them? So it'd be...
Yes, sir.
It'd be a budget amendment of 170,000 if we do a loan.
I don't, I would like to do the three, without the municipal lots, and then put the municipal lots next year's budget to do those.
I think Council Brewster has a good point about maybe until decisions made on parks and rec building or something.
Yeah. It looks like we're getting a grant to do our rec center next year. It'll be at Municipal Park on the hill. I would hate to pave it and then go back and turn it up with construction. This price was not included, the main entrance, it's just...
That's correct.
What's that still means?
The main entrance is in pretty bad shape now at this point.
Yeah, and it's never been paved, right, Mark, I mean, it's just got...
The founders always ever answered on it.
I would like to hold off on that until we get our construction done, and then just clean sweep it.
So we can go ahead and do the three part?
Yeah.
The one they had to talk to Rogers Group, and the event that we chose them, they're about a month out of the schedule, but they can't do it this long.
Springfield's only $4,000 different, they're a local company. What about Springfield?
Do you follow the string though, to find out exactly what their schedule looks like?
Mark talked to him.
I did about the Elrodale project, I did not talk to him, it's about the three. The start of town, it's 34 dollars. He wouldn't get it done by us at all.
Okay, well, we've agreed on the three projects, I think, and I'd say there's not that much difference in the price, which everyone can give us, which is turning between now, now Monday, you could secure a timetable. Okay, so let's just focus on the three. Is everybody okay with that?
I do, I'd like to stay local for 14.
Okay.
Well, the bottom line is, staying local, money's going to stay with you, too. And I, Springfield, for a fact, doesn't have any bad dudes out in the county workforce. And I would much rather see him have a bid.
All right.
I can tell you, he's as good as any that you've got here, because he's done a lot of work for me in the back. I've never had a problem with him.
Okay. Any other questions for Ellis, sir? Okay, thank you. Next item is the bucket truck, or public works department. Oh, sorry, burn permit. Burn permit, this was something I asked Manager Ross to put on the agenda with the discussion of Chief Will Baker, and I'm going to turn it over to him. He supplied everyone with, thanks to documentation from MTS and our current open burning permit. Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
So in your package, you should have had a copy of our current ordinance, the TDEX rules and regulations for open burning. Our permit we actually issued when somebody wants a burn permit, the one I gave you tonight was the MTS recommendation they're giving municipalities for burn permit. MTS will not take a stance that say no burning, but their stance is the less burning, the better. It's more, less pollution in the air to harm people, and less chance of fire spreading to cause damage to the people. So that's kind of their stance. I talked to the MTS fire consultant tonight last week, and that draft right there is what they give cities to put it out, to place those orders for open burning. It doesn't prohibit burning, but it puts a pretty strict guidelines on it.
There's a lot more teeth in that, other than what ours.
Our current ordinance is a very, very gray, very vague area, and we do receive a lot of issues with our burn permits we issue. Most permits we issue do receive a complaint from a neighbor complaining about the smoke and the smell. A lot of the permits we issue are in violation. Once we leave and issue the permit, people will throw stuff in there they shouldn't be put burning, they'll leave it unattended, which is against the permit, it'll be burning at dark, which is against the permit. So those are the main issues we have once we issue a permit.
What would be the, why would we even have burning period? Because our public works department picks up everything that can be burned.
Correct.
But it says that, didn't you? You know, that's supposed to...
The TDEX, the MTS recommendation basically is, for somebody clearing a lot for a development, say for example, they have to have at least 20 acres they're clearing, they have to dig a pit and use an air curtain purifier, which burns it faster, hotter, and is supposed to put out less particulates in the air. And then for a normal burn, like for a resident, you need three acres, that's kind of allowing the farmers, anybody that's still farming, has acres to burn, like a fence roll off, for example, or something of that nature. But that's kind of the stipulations that MTS wants to allow. And they do allow still, like the little fires for people, you know, to roast marshmallows or cook hot dogs, things like that, your recreational fires, that do not require a permit.
Well, now, you're the city, do we, I know we have some acreage inside of the city that's still farming. Normally, they would get that permit from the farmer of the little city.
Correct.
We have to still get it from the city.
If it's in the city, we issue a permit, and then they don't need to worry about the county.
You don't call, you don't call the state.
Correct. If it's in the city, we issue the permit.
But if it's outside the city, which I've got property lease in the upper area, you still contact them.
Oh, the county, correct. Yes.
But it is still legal agricultural permit?
Yeah, then that would be still, like, if y'all look at the MTS recommendation, it is still agricultural, there's limitation of three acres, minimum three acres of burn.
That's statewide, bringing in...
Correct.
I think that's what they patented after the state statute.
So that really doesn't affect it, that, though?
Right.
So if the state has a no-burn ban on the next two weeks, you automatically...
We follow it, correct.
Well, no-burn ban would conclude the city as well, you couldn't, but it would make the state's.
That sets precedent. So I guess, so your recommendation is the MTS...
I like the MTS draft ordinance. I think that's a great ordinance, and that's very easy for us to follow in the course.
And I think it's something, you know, you were just handed tonight, so you've got time to look over it.
On page three of the MTS draft ordinance, the items highlighted in blue, those are the main two bullet points as far as what they allow with burning, and then under that, there's some things I highlighted in yellow, just to kind of see what that actually guideline, and what that stipulates with that burn.
I like the MTS one. The only thing that denies, like about this, is the $50 deposit required. The only people that are doing the big wildfires are going to be the school or the church, and so that was just the MTS recommendation, that wasn't a city recommendation, so.
So we can strike that out.
We can strike that out.
Only other question I have is, I know there's two different timeframes in here, like...
I saw that.
30 hours, one's seven, and one's nine?
Right.
I just don't feel the same. You know, seven or nine, just make them, one can be, can't start before nine, and one can't start before seven.
And one was allowed till dark, and one was allowed till 3:30.
Yeah, I think that's consistent, so we're confused on that.
I think part of that had to do with the land size.
I think it's, yeah, be a larger fire.
Yeah.
And I think your recommendation there would be fine.
And Dr. Goddard is going to come tonight, he's a very big proponent of no-burning period just because of the harmful particulates put in the air for our children mainly, he's not going to, he wasn't going to be here tonight, he couldn't make it, but he did express that he, he's for anything that strengthens the hard, you know, strengthens the no-burning.
I think Manager Ross had a conversation with him.
Yeah, he did, he did reach out and express his regret that he couldn't be here, but it's an issue that's important to him.
Okay. So we'll take this under advisement as far as look over this policy, and we'll work with Chief Will Baker and see if we can strengthen the current policy we have.
Well, we've had some problems in the bay, since the survey, I clarified.
Right, definitely does.
Permitting would be available for 24/7?
We usually permit the morning of, and for the reasons of weather conditions.
And it's only good for one day, right?
Correct. It's day by day.
What I'm saying, if a guy was to burn on Sunday...
Oh, yes. Yeah, we have somebody available to go inspect it any day of the week. Correct. Yep.
And to get that, do they just call dispatch and say...
They can call dispatch, or the fire department will...
Can we put that in?
We definitely can.
Get it across to the...
How to get it, yep.
Oh, get that in the document?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. You have questions?
Chief Will Baker?
I think it's a good step. I know it's something he's been passionate about and...
We've had a lot of issues over the year with open burning.
This would be a way to kind of eliminate some of those issues. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So this is a, this would be a future ordinance to consider, and it would take a couple months.
Couple months, thanks, right. Now we'll get to the next item, which is the bucket truck. Manager Ross?
Yes, Ellis Scruggs, our public works director, and from LUB. Travis Williams is here, along with Jim McKee. This is really just an instance of the right hand talking to the left. You placed in the public works department budget $60,000 for a used bucket truck. Ellis has been doing due diligence, shopping around for such a vehicle. Because of the CMAC grant, Jim McKee, Travis, and the utility department have been, you know, in the throes of managing their fleet and understanding what they can get, what things cost, and at what time, and they just had a real keen understanding of the market, and I asked Ellis to reach out to Jim and get some advice on this particular vehicle. And after putting their heads together, they come up with a proposal where allowing the public works department to buy actually a used vehicle that was in the LUB fleet. And a picture is worth a thousand words, and that vehicle is in the parking lot tonight for you to review.
Go keep the tires, whatever. In any case, I think this is a, like I say, it's a good collaboration between two departments, and I think it meets the needs of both. Something we had in our budget to do, and I think this was a, right, Travis, this was a truck that was going to be replaced in a couple years anyway.
Yes, sir.
So...
Are you giving it up now?
Well, I think it's going to be...
It'll take a year. It'll take us a year to get a replacement, but within this year, anytime public works needs it, they can come get it. We'll house it because we do still use it from time to time, but most of the time, he can have it. They can have it whenever they need it.
I think most of the trucks you looked at, Ellis had a lot of miles on them.
Yeah.
This one has 47,000, I think, so...
What kind of price are you going to, what would it be worth to you in next year when you give it up? 60,000 probably, I mean, that's, you know, it may bring a little more on gov deals. We're going with Altech trucks now, that's a Terrax high-range Ford and Chevrolet, but Altech's not going to give us a lot of money for it, you know, just like the Elliott truck we just done, they offered us 30,000, we put on gov deals, we got 60,000, so, you know, who knows if that's a gamble, but whatever.
I think it'd be hard for us to find that type of truck for that money.
No, I think we're going to be spending city money, and we best spend it in the city.
Well, there's no doubt that, you know the history of the truck, that's a big plus there. You buy something, you don't know where it comes from, you're only, and depending on what someone tells you. When you get it home, it may be too late what they say, not what you get.
We bought this truck brand new, it's been to electric testing every year, it went through our maintenance building, it's a good truck, it's just not exactly what we need on the line.
It does get your needs, right?
Absolutely.
Everything you need as far as...
We've been using it in lieu of our bucket truck, we had to take our job service, as deemed, to be more pairs of the trucks for us, so we've been using that truck.
Okay, for the batteries and...
Yes, it's an outstanding truck for us.
Well, as soon as I heard the proposal, I said, if you guys can work it out, let's do it. I mean, that's the bottom line. If you'd be as happy as... We do, if somebody person's happy, we're happy. It was bought as a underground bucket truck to...
It was bought as a underground bucket truck to fix ornamental lights, uh, working substations, and we'd kind of, we, we bought different trucks that we do that with now. It's, it's still in service, we still use it, but it's not rolling every day. It's more of a backup for fixing lights out in the building. We need an extra truck.
Well, what we did, when we, we brought this, talked about this during budget, the deal we talked about was Parks and Rec and Public Works going together and, and give the bucket truck. Anybody remember that?
I just remember talking about that truck.
That was.
Which, I mean, I'm sure they still share this truck, you know, at some point.
Need the parties who want to use it all the time, so.
Is that something that would even take, well, I guess it would take recommendation of both from us?
It's, 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 it's the authorization of the set of persons.
Yeah.
Makes sense, please.
Yeah. Does everybody have a problem with any more questions?
We can take forty thousand.
He's probably not in a position to do.
Mr. Ross.
Yeah.
You know, say no.
Well, I'm like, I'm like, uh, Councilmember Jane, I think if we keep the, we milk the truck, and I think that speaks a lot of Jim McKee's here. If anybody's got any question about the maintenance on it?
You never paid for last one, right?
Yeah.
Grant you money.
Yeah. Alright, any other question about the bucket truck? Alright, we'll move on to the Henry property annexation process, and that pact was also included. Manager Ross, you want to?
Yes, you, you kicked off the annexation process of this property. It's thirty-eight and a half acres on East Lee Highway. Tax map thirty-three parcels twenty-three and sixteen. Um, you kicked off this process, it, uh, it went to the, uh, Loudon County Regional Planning Commission. Uh, they reviewed the plan of service, uh, they, uh, have recommended it back to you. Uh, you have a public hearing, uh, next week on the nineteenth, ahead of your regular meeting. And then upon approval of this, uh, annexation, uh, resolution, uh, we have certain notice requirements, uh, that we pick in, provide notice to the, to the county mayor, to the election commission, as well as emergency responders. And last but not least, Tennessee Department of Revenue, who notify the tax purposes that this, these parcels are, are part of the city.
Attorney Friday said there's a couple of steps there that, I mean, we'll have to approve the annexation and the plan services and?
That's right, and, and we, we fault, we set those public hearings in, in the proper order of our July fifteenth meeting, so assuming, uh, or if, if this council decides to, uh, approve this annexation, it'll be effective immediately in our next meeting.
Okay, so as far as that goes, we'll have public hearings starting at six oh five. And I think there's like five different public hearings. So several of these will apply to this annexation, along with, uh, some other planning commission items. That's correct, sir. Okay. Any questions about the annexation process? Have I noticed the property we're talking about?
Yes, just for your, for your memory that there's the, uh, picture of parcels on the screen.
Any questions? Alright. Next item is a mini of the agreement for two oh one on the place, the Old City Hall.
The county attorney got with, uh, with Chris and requested just one singular change.
It's item ten. If you look on your contract, it's just, I think, uh, Attorney Friday can explain the reasoning?
Yeah, this is, uh, we had previously voted to approve this, and then the county made a, uh, a last minute change of apply, just asking for more flexibility in the contract. It originally had two one-year terms. Now it's just for two years, but either side can cancel upon sixty days written notice. So that way, if courthouse is done in fourteen months or sixteen months, they, they can go ahead and move on, uh, and, and terminate the lease.
Then that tied to another twelve months. And also, if we had, they were gone and we had someone that wanted, had another use for it, we could terminate it in sixty days.
That's right.
So that's the only change, and like I said, it's item number ten, and it's spelled out there. Somebody, any questions about that? Okay. Now the, that next item is the Huff Berry sale of property. Manager Ross?
We held a public auction for property in the Riverview subdivision. Uh, property , uh, that, that long ago was taken as collateral on a water project. Um, it did bring bids on, on the open, open market. Uh, the bids came separately. One was the purchase of the two smaller lots, um, here and here, uh, inside the neighborhood, uh, by the adjoining property owner. Uh, that came in at ten thousand eight hundred ninety dollars. Uh, nine thousand nine hundred of that, uh, coming back to us. Uh, the larger tractors is thirteen acres, it drew, um, it drew thirty, thirty-two, two thirty, so twenty-nine, three hundred, twenty-nine thousand three hundred dollars, uh, coming back to us after the, after the auction company has paid. So what you can do, what we are asking you to do is to authorize me to attend the closing and, and collect these funds.
I want to thank Manager Ross for even digging this up, you know, this is kind of, it's on our lap.
It came, it came quite by accident. It was a citizen complaint about a fallen tree. And, um, they, they said it was our fault. Uh, we investigated and, and found that it was the city-owned property outside of the city. And, um, it was a good discovery. Uh, the water department will get, uh, some of the bad debt back, and, uh, and the property will come back on to the county tax level.
Right, that's another positive thing. Look back on the tax rolls now. And the property arm, probably got a pretty good price for the property as well. Any questions about proving Manager Ross to close on that?
About, about forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
After that goes to city.
The arm wrestle, uh, Chairman Karen.
Yeah, yeah. He's saying no. Uh, personal rules and regulation amendment, this has been discussed a couple of times, I think, and, um, I think it was tabled at the July meeting, so I'm going to just turn it over to Councilmember Dixon. This is his recommendation. We'll let him introduce it.
This is personal rules and regulations that have been drawn up for three months now. And, uh, we put it off, put it off to discuss this number of amount of times. And, uh, I want us to go ahead and put it on the agenda for next week and, uh, go ahead and vote on it. Anybody's got any questions?
There's not many changes made of what they've seen.
No.
So there, there's no changes made to the original document, so basically, he's requesting it be put on next week's agenda for, not only with this board, but also utility.
Me too.
Won't have a question about it, looked at it, as he said, we've talked about it several times, discussed it. Okay, so we'll have it on the agenda for our vote. Next item is the emergency alert system, so I'm just going to turn this over to Councilmember Bills.
Yes, okay, so this is something that brought up a while back about the sirens. We have two active sirens, well, we have two sirens, um, in the city, and we weren't even sure if they worked, um, or if they were even usable. Utilities has done an awesome job of getting one of those down and checking it. Um, it actually is operating a little bit somewhat. Um, I would just like to get the council's feel as to how you all would feel about creating a committee. You know, these sirens are maybe obsolete. Um, we may be interested in doing a different route, some type of notification, uh, working with the nine-one-one center on emergency alerts. Um, or there's some very reasonable class sirens that are more up to date than what this older ones that we have right now are.
Who would you and Chip like to be on, serve with you on that committee?
Yeah, Chip has been instrumental, I'm telling you. He, he knows all this technological stuff. I don't, I reached out to him because the siren was very near to him, and, um, I hear he knew quite a bit about it, so.
I think you two ought to be on the committee.
I could, I could have thrown a rock and hit it.
Yes, yeah, and he knew everything about it, plus some. So, um, I would like, you know, if, if the committee, if you all would agree with that, and think that's okay to do.
Would anybody like to volunteer to serve on that committee?
More than love.
Well, I think.